Kitty's collecting some paper, we'll let her finish. Go ahead, okay. All right, thank you everybody for joining us tonight. I see Dr. Schwab is with us this evening, hello. Sir, thank you for joining us. And welcome to everybody else who's here with us tonight. We will start as we always do with Chafflin Gobes, welcome back.
Let's take a moment to pray. Dear our prayer, O Lord, grateful grace and goodness will be our words of prayer that break open our heart to you, the giver of our life. We're grateful for the gifts of our living, the precious mystery beyond words that moves us from the depth of our soul, we bet trust. Grace, grace that holds us vulnerable and flawed persons, ever being loved and delivering out of your will, if we bet trust. Such a mystery how it is that we came to be, to live in this moment in time, in this place, and with one another, and to serve and work in this community, in this hospital. Our cup runneth over with your love. Goodness, your goodness that you proclaimed from the beginning of time flows from your spirit into all creation, even into our own heartbeat. So held in gratefulness, grace and goodness, we offer our work and service together as a hospital. As a stewardship of the gifts you have given us, grateful for fulfillment it brings to our life, grateful that we can give right healing to those in need, grateful for the grace that provides our soul.
Okay. Everyone has the, tonight's agenda in front of you? I think everybody's had time to review, do we have any additions or subtractions from the agenda tonight? No? Okay. Announcing our guest tonight, I think we'll, I skipped that in the beginning, kind of flipped that around. And tonight, we don't have any special presentations, but we do have a full agenda, so we will jump right into it with reviewing the minutes of August's meeting that you have in front of you. If those have been reviewed, I will entertain a motion to put those in the record.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes from August 25th?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? The minute passed. We will move into our committee reports. Mr. Haas, Budget and Finance Committee, did you all meet this month?
We did, Budget and Finance did meet, had a very nice lengthy meeting on Monday afternoon. We do have a couple of items that's on the consent agenda, one having to do with the purchase of equipment, second having to do with a lease that the hospital will be entering into. But we've also got three resolutions down here to consider tonight, too. Outside of that, we had a very good report from our external auditor about our audit for this past year, and I'd like to pass the ball over to Brett to talk about it.
Yeah, we had a clean opinion, and for those in the accounting world, that means that's good. And we also had a zero audit adjustment, so I do have to say, congratulations to my Health Finance team for a job well done. Very unusual to not have any. We ended the year, as we've mentioned, we grew our top line revenue about 111 million, and we, our bottom bottom line, 25.4 million versus a budget of 18.7. So we continue to prosper and our market share grow as well. And it's an organic growth versus the major acquisitions, and that's very unusual for health systems, especially public hospitals to do that. So we're very proud of what we were able to accomplish. Kevin's going to go a little more into that in his report, but again, a very good audit and a clean opinion.
Dr. Kern, did joint conference meet this?
We did.
Okay, great. Planning Committee?
We did not meet.
Audit and Compliance?
We did not meet.
Legal Committee?
Did not meet.
Okay. IMBC?
We did meet, we had an excellent discussion, but took no action, so there's nothing to report.
Okay. And I'll report the Executive Committee of the Board, we did meet on August 1st, and during that meeting, we interviewed, took advice and feedback, but also took it upon ourselves to speak with them directly, the IHS, who will be our new compensation committee, or not, compensation consultants to the compensation committee, and found them to be really world-class, their credentials are impeccable. I invite anyone else that was in the conversation to add, I think they take a really good approach to whole compensation and how we do that moving forward, I think it'll really help us take another step in the right direction. So.
I think they also had, I think, a lot of good to say on physician compensation, which is not something that traditionally our committee has spent a lot of time looking at, so.
And so they'll be helping us with both.
Yeah, yes, and I'm really looking forward to their expertise on that.
Some of y'all that were at IMBC a minute ago met Toni, and she is our main point of contact there, but she has a whole team behind her, so excited about that. Any other questions on that one in particular? Any unfinished business that we've left out or we're missing? Okay, great. With that, we will move on to our consent calendar, we have two items on the consent calendar, I'll entertain a motion for that consent calendar.
So moved.
Do I have a second for that one?
Second.
Have a second. With that, all in favor of passing the two items on the consent calendar?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining on that one? No? Okay. Great, we will move on to Resolution 16903. Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm also going to invite John Locher up here, he's our VP of Facilities and Engineering, he's going to get into much more detail about this resolution, but it's basically to build a combined heat and energy plant that will save the organization a lot of money, which is a very good thing. So I'll let John get into it, and Donna Taylor's up here with us, she assisted John in doing the financial projections around this project, so.
That, John?
All right, thank you, Rob, for this up. I'll give you a little bit of background first. Last summer, Erlanger was in the process, we engaged an engineering firm to do some baseline energy modeling and to look at some energy savings opportunities we might have here on the campus. And one of the things that we identified early on is, this campus would be a good model for a CHP plant. And I'll get into that a little bit with what that is, how they work, but at the time, we didn't really have the capital to invest in it, so we kind of backburnered it. And then, in the fall of last year, Ben Edgar from White Harvest Energy approached me, and he says, "John, I got an interesting proposition. TBA has an RFP out, they're willing to fund up to $6.75 million towards the construction of a plant, and we think you have a good model here." And I said, "Yeah, funny you should mention that, we've been looking at it." So I partnered White Harvest with Chinook, and we got a design team together, and we submitted a plan to TBA. CHP, Combined Heat and Power, currently about 12% of the power in the United States is generated through Combined Heat and Power. It saves the building industry billions of dollars, it decreases the amount of fuel used to create energy, and it's good for the environment. It creates an opportunity to reduce millions of tons of pollutants into the atmosphere. CHP for hospitals, they're a good fit, hospitals have a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week heat and electric demand load on them. And if you look at commercial buildings, hospitals use about two and a half times more energy or electricity than a commercial office building would use. So they're high consumers, and CHPs also, they provide security from the regional grid. If you have your onsite generation plant, and there's an event on the regional grid, you can go into idle mode, or island mode, and still sustain your operations. Nationwide, the EPA has been pushing utility companies to get away from coal and fossil fuels, they've put out all kinds of incentives and directives, and TBA has launched several of those with Valley businesses, with solar power, like you'll see at the airport and such things as that. Right now, TBA generates about 53% of their power comes from coal plants. TBA will debate that, they say it's closer to 40%, but it depends on what's running at the time. 22% of the power comes from nuclear, 16% from natural gas, 7% from hydro, like the dam we have right here in Chattanooga, and then, less than 1% comes from solar or wind power. CHP defined Combined Heat and Power is an efficient and clean approach to generating electric power and useful thermal energy from a single fuel source. When considering both thermal and electrical process together, CHP typically requires less primary energy than separate heat and power systems. The heat released from the power production is used to meet the thermal requirements, while the power generating meets all or a portion of the building's needs. Now, this illustration here represents the current configuration of how power is generated in a valley. We buy our power directly from TBA, and to deliver one megawatt of electric and one megawatt of heat to Erlanger, the fuel required is equivalent to 4.3 megawatts. So you have a fuel source like coal. I'm not sure if you can hear me, but the coal will go into the power plant, and out of that 3.08 megawatts of fuel, better than half of it is lost in heat, right out the stacks. Tremendous amount of heat waste and tremendous amount of particles going into the atmosphere. Once it leaves the generating station, it goes out on the transmission lines, and then it gets to EPB where they distribute it to the hospital. During that process, you lose another 0.8 megawatts of fuel source, or energy. So you're starting with 3.8 to get to your 1 megawatt. The other fuel source we have here is our natural gas to run our boilers. We use boilers to create steam for heat, they create steam for the autoclaves to sterilize the OR instruments, we use it for domestic hot water, for hand washing, patient showering, and we also use it for hot water for the laundry facility. You get 1.25 megawatts of fuel, again, you got .25 megawatts of waste, and you get your 1 megawatt of heat into the building. So you're starting out with 4.3 to gain 2 megawatts, your overall efficiency is about 46%, and that's typical nationwide. The way Combined Heat and Power works is, you take one fuel source, and instead of using the 4.3, you reduce down to only 2.27 to make the same 2 megawatts of energy. The fuel goes directly into the generator sets, which create, spin the dynamo and create the electricity. It also creates a tremendous amount of heat. So the heat from the engine blocks are taken and captured as hot water and pumped into the building systems. The heats from the exhaust are, go into a heat exchanger, and they're used to create the steam. So you're capturing a good percentage of your waste and importing it back into the building, and you're down to about 2.7 megawatts of waste, or an overall efficiency of 88%. The benefits are tremendous to CHP plants, there's over 224 hospitals in the nation right now that currently have CHP plants on site. Will have over 50% of our total power, electricity will be used, generated here on site. CHP will recover about 75% of our usable heat, and they provide energy security. During Hurricane Sandy, two hospitals up in New Jersey, Princeton University Medical Center and Jersey Shore Medical Center, each had onsite generation on their campus, they had CHPs. The rest of the region was in a blackout, they were able to go into island mode and sustain operations. Hospitals in New York City were evacuating patients. So if there's ever a regional event on the grid, from a storm, or cybersecurity, anything, Erlanger will have the ability, as a regional trauma center, to isolate itself and still stay up and running. Environmental is, goes without saying, we're reducing tons, metric tons of carbon, sulfur, and oxide into the atmosphere, and just to benefit, it's the equivalent of taking over 2,000 cars off the road, and we think that number's very conservative each year in Chattanooga. On the financial side, we're looking at conservatively 1.6 million per year in energy savings off our utility bill, an ROI of about 3.8 years, and over 12-year period, we're going to save over $19 million. And just so you know, last month, I just signed off on our utility bill, it was over $500,000 a month we paid to EPB for electric, just on this site. This is basic cash flow analysis. CHP system, a total project cost of about $13 million. We have the incentive from TBA of 6.75 million. Erlanger will put in 6.25 million, with an average savings of 1.62 a year. Currently, our electric is, actually this year it's over 5 million, here at the main campus. Our gas is just about a million. Total energy cost now is going to be over 6 million this year. We're projecting, the electric rate's going to drop dramatically, down to about 2 million a year. Our gas will increase to 1.6, because we'll be fueling the gen sets with the gas, natural gas. And then, operating and maintenance cost of about 661,000. So the total energy cost will go from about 6 million down to 4.3 million, or a save of 1.62 million a year. We're looking to site this plant right across the back of the hospital, across Blackford Street, we have, the central energy plant is there now, just adjacent to Tennessee American Water. There's a small building here that currently has five of our generators for emergency backup power, they're stationed there, and our proposal is to put it in the old incinerator plant. We have the building structure there, and we would put these modules in this building and connect them to our central energy plant. This is an aerial shot, you can see the proximity of the water plant and our central energy plant here, and again, that would be the location we're proposing. During the design process, there was a lot of companies out competing with Erlanger to get this money, to build this plant. We put a team together nationally, regionally, and locally, that have all experience with building the CHP and onsite generations. The plan we put together came out really well, and we were subsequently awarded the funding from TBA. And here's just an illustration of one type of generator set, and then your prime mover, your engine sets that would be used to create the electricity. And here's another example. And up here, this is an illustration, we're also looking at what you call tri-generation. If we have enough heat load from this plant, in the summertime, there's a lower demand for heat on the building, we could potentially use that steam from that heat load to drive chillers and make air conditioning. So it's a very efficient way to make energy, and we're excited about the opportunity, and glad to answer any questions.
Yes, sir.
Why did the TBA give us that money, what's their reasoning behind that?
TBA had some incentives to give, to give funding for a lot of green projects. They had some issues with the EPA on their fossil fuel plants, their coal plants, so TBA said, "Reach out to your customer," I mean, EPA said, "Reach out to your customer base and get creative, create some of these cleaner power initiatives." And this one came up, it was the last in a list of projects that they had out for bid, and we went after it and we got it.
Is this going to produce an excess amount of power for the hospital?
No, part of the rules is, we can't export. And the other thing is, with Combined Heat and Power, you want to find that sweet spot, you don't want to be wasting too much heat. So if we generated all of our power, that percentage of waste would go up. So in the summer, the way it stands now, we'll be wasting a little bit, but then in the winter, we'll be using all of it. So we had to model it to where we gained the most effective and most efficient way of generating power and capturing that heat to gain the best benefit.
It's about 60% of our usage will go to the CHP plant, and then that 40% will still be eligible for the commercial rates. So anything more than that, you would then be triggering higher rates, and it would really, this is kind of the best place to be, and we were advised, this is to have the three modules.
You said you can't export it, did I understand you?
Yes, yeah, that's part of the conditions with TBA, they don't want.
That means you can't sell it to somebody?
No, we cannot, not at this time.
Yeah, there's three main conditions of the agreement, one being, as John mentioned, you don't sell it, you have to use it for 12 years, minimum 12 years, and we have to own it.
Yeah.
I mean, those are the three major conditions of receiving the money.
So the cost savings projection, it pays for itself in a little less than four years?
That's correct, yes. The incentive really helps that.
Yes, love incentives.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
So with that, we'd like to ask the Board to authorize a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract between Chattanooga Hamilton County Hospital Authority and the Tennessee Valley Authority for the installation of a Combined Heat and Power Plant at the Erlanger Baroness Campus.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, or abstaining? Great, I think that'll be a great project, thanks guys, I'm sure a lot of work went into that.
And I do want to recognize John for all of his work in this, if, had he not been here with us on our team, I don't think that we would have gotten this opportunity, so kudos to John and his team for.
All right, you're already up there, Brett? Thank you.
So, the next resolution is how are we going to cash flow this project, and we've come up with a creative way of doing that. As you remember, back about a year ago, the Board approved a line of credit with First Tennessee Bank with very favorable terms for Erlanger for two things, one being the ICD-10 conversion, and then the EpiC conversion, it was a $24 million line of credit. Luckily, we did not have any issues with ICD-10, that went very well. And so, what we wanted to do, based on the previous presentation, we're going to use this line of credit to help us temporarily cash flow the project instead of dipping into our cash account. What this will allow us to do is, it's a six-year loan, three years of it is interest only, and currently, the interest rate is one month LIBOR plus 84 basis points, so it's a 134 basis point loan at this point. And this will allow us, we think that we can get this project done in 18 months, and so what that allows us to do is, for a year and a half, to generate those savings that John mentioned, to pay off the principal in the last three years of the loan. This will, we've got very good favorable rates in the market. This has also been reviewed by the Financial Review Committee, as required by the Authority Act, and they unanimously recommended this, and the chairman has a copy of that letter as well. So it is a very positive way of financing the cash flow for this very important project for Erlanger, and will generate the savings that we need to pay off the debt service as it comes due.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve.
Okay. Second?
Yeah, I'm going to make a comment, that I'm going to recuse myself from the, since I have a conflict.
Okay. With that, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We have one abstaining, any opposed? That the motion passes. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Brett.
Thank you. I have the pleasure of presenting this resolution to the Board this evening, and this is a resolution to pay our employees a $400 discretionary bonus this year. As you might imagine, we have an exceptional workforce, and that includes both our clinical employees and our non-clinical associates. This grew out of the Management Board Evaluation Committee a couple of years ago to have a discretionary bonus program for our employees, and management reviews the performance of the organization from a performance and quality safety service perspective, so overall performance of Erlanger Health System. And we reviewed after year-end, the performance of the organization, and we had a tremendous year in fiscal year 2016, we have a tremendous workforce, and I stand before you this evening recommending that, or recommending ours, asking for approval for a $400 bonus for our employees. The total cost is $1.6 million.
And just to add, it is, has been accrued in our fiscal '16 financial audit, so this does not impact the financial position in the current fiscal '17.
How many people does that cover?
About 3,700 employees are eligible this year.
Can you explain what eligible is?
So eligible employees are those regular full-time and regular part-time employees that have been with us prior to January 1 of 2016, so for at least six months of the fiscal year. It does exclude temporary employees, PRN employees, also managers and physicians are not eligible to participate in this program.
Or executives.
I'm sorry.
Or executives.
Yeah, executives, so manager, yes, management executives, et cetera.
When will it be paid? When will they see it?
This will, if approved, if it is approved this evening, it will be on the paychecks next Friday, so Friday week, September 30th, I believe.
I think it's a great move, because these are the people on the front lines who do the hard work. Maybe it's your.
Do we have a motion? There's our motion, second? I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, or abstaining? All right, thank you very much, Greg, I think that's it. Awesome thing. Yes, Sam.
I'm super excited and really glad that we passed that, I think it's worth recognizing, but I did want to, just once again, every year when this comes up, suggest that it would be possible to look into whether or not we can extend performance-based incentives to more members of the Erlanger family and more employees. I know it's complicated, I recognize that not all public hospitals do it, but I also recognize we do a lot that other public hospitals don't do as well, and we're doing it very successfully. So to the extent that we may be able to offer more than a discretionary bonus from time to time, but we could include more employees in an incentive plan, I think that's something worth further discussion.
Duly noted, thank you. We are now ready to move on to Dr. Kern.
Without an emergency call.
He has left us, okay. Well, he's doing important things then. Dr. For, do we have a Dean's Report today? Is Dr. For here? And with that, we will turn it over to Mr. Spiegel for the CEO's Report, please.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I do want to acknowledge formally Dr. Schwab for being here with us. We are working together in a positive way to onboard the new dean for the Chattanooga Campus, Dr. Shaq. And so, Dr. Schwab is going to be meeting with all the chairmen over the next day or two, and work together, and I appreciate you personally being involved in this.
Kevin, it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you, sir.
2016, congratulations to Brett and his financial staff for doing the magic they do, but it was a tremendous year for the hospital. We had a very strong financial year. Our net revenue increased from 713 million to 824 million. That is an 1,100.
An 1,110.
111 million increase, thank you.
It's a really big number.
Really, really big number. That's a 15% increase in overall net revenue. So if it didn't come from rate increases, because we are the lowest-cost hospital in the region, this came strictly from volume increase. And this past year, 50- So this was tremendous, and it wasn't just that. It was also tied to market share growth. That is measured by the Tennessee Hospital Association, and there has also been dramatic growth in our market share. Overall, our commercial discharges were up 10%. That was unbelievable. Smaller things like just the DaVinci procedures alone were up 65% in our market. Our market share grew not only in Hamilton County, but more significantly, the region. We opened up the Orthopedic Institute. Some of that had impacted our financials, but we're gonna probably see a much bigger impact in this year, because we'll have a full year when we close this year in the Orthopedic Institute. Our capacity expanded by over 25%, and we recruited more than 50 doctors into Chattanooga this past year. That is the greatest number that this community has ever seen, physicians entering into this area. We recruited key physicians in cardiovascular and cardiac surgery, and that is continuing, and we're very, very excited about that. And we are on budget, on schedule for the Erlanger East Hospital. And when that comes on, it's gonna be about another 80 new beds online within 90 days, and that's something we're all excited about. It'll probably be even sooner now. And I wanted to also thank John Locher for that unbelievable thing that we're entering into this whole cogeneration world about really not only, you know, reducing our spend, but improving the ecology at the same time. Quick update on the Behavioral Health Hospital. We have partnered with Acadia in this venture. The CON approved it unanimously, nine to zero. The facility will have 88 beds. It is on the corner of Holt's Claw and Citico, and it's a $25 million project into probably the area in Chattanooga that needs the most economic development. Park Ridge has appealed that. It will probably delay our project approximately six to nine months, but we are confident, as that appeal has no merit, we will...
It's shameful, sorry.
We are confident that we're gonna prevail. But, you know, we're excited about that, but we're also excited about the trajectory that we're on this year. So, Mr. Chairman, that is my report.
Thank you, Kevin. Any questions from any of the board, from management team or anything on that? It's a great year, nice top-line revenue growth. I know that's a lot of hard work. I know it's put a lot of stress on the operations of the hospital, the doctors in the hospital, so thank you to the team and everybody here for handling all the new patients that we had. There were moments where it was a tough year, but I think we came through, and everybody's, I think most of you are still smiling about it. But, so thank you. Good year.
And also, we were able to do that, Mr. Chairman, just one last thing, is that our uncompensated care actually grew from about $85 million to $90.7 million. So we're doing more of our share at the same time. So that dynamic is extremely unusual.
Thank you. I think that if there are no other reports from trustees, everybody sees the calendar for upcoming meetings. And are we gonna do credentialing if Dr. Kern isn't here? Are we able to do that without him? Yeah, okay. I think it's Dr. Jackson will lead us to that. So we're gonna adjourn and go upstairs and do credentialing?
Eroc.
Or Eroc.
Right across the hall.
Okay, sorry, I didn't get that. We're going to Eroc, great.
You're late.
I was. No, I was late. That usually happens, I understand. With that, we're going to adjourn. Thank you.